Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Tuesday, September the 8th, 2020. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Dave Harrison.
James Kaufman, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, August 17th, 2020. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
And I was out. I'll say, please?
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you, Board. This evening, we have five pages of wastewater claims in the amount of $133,625.48. Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims dated September the 8th, 2020, in the amount of $133,625.48.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting, and we have no new business this evening. Comments from board members?
I have none.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
The meeting is adjourned, and we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting after we reset. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Tuesday, September the 8th, 2020. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Dave Harrison.
James Kaufman, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, August 17th, 2020. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. This evening, Board, we have 45 pages of corporate claims in the amount of $1,919,707.3. Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated September the 8th, 2020, in the amount of $1,919,707.3.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. Unfinished business carried over from previous meetings. Give you an update on the Franciscan Trail. The Endot with the trail construction now for bid on August the 1st. Endot awarded, or opened the bids on September the 2nd. There were seven bidders, which is outstanding. And Morphe Construction is the most responsive bidder. So at this time, Jim, could you read this into the record, please?
Yes, sir. City of Beech Grove, regarding LPA Award Recommendation Letter. Dear Mr. Project Manager, this signed award recommendation letter signifies your public, your local public agency, LPA, is in agreement with the apparent low bid listed below and wishes to award. This bid is within statutory requirements for awardable criteria. Please sign and return this notification within two business days. Beware, if the federal funds awarded for this project are less than the apparent low bid, your LPA will be 100% financially responsible for the additional funds greater than your award. This includes cost overruns and change orders. Contract number R39660, inscription number is 1600657-1902722-1902724-1902725. Apparent low bid contractor, Morphe Construction Incorporated. Apparent low bid amount, $3,429,000. Leading date, September 2nd, 2020. Please do not hesitate to contact me if you have any questions. Sincerely, Shelley Kindred, LPA Program Director, Greenfield District.
The inscription number, the first number is the project number, and the last four numbers, if you remember right, we approved each bridge separately. Those are the DES numbers for those bridges. So what will happen next is Endot will enter into an agreement with the construction company. And then Endot will bill the City of Beech Grove for our 20% match, and then we will step away from the construction. The only thing we will be responsible for is inspection. I don't anticipate any construction of the trail until next spring, with the exception of maybe some bridge work, but I'm not sure. So that is good news for the city, and it's hard to turn down $3 million. So Brad signed off on it, which he can, and we are now waiting on Endot to award the bid. That concludes unfinished business. Under new business, we have several items tonight. The first is a Uniform Conflict of Interest Disclosure Statement, and I'll defer to the clerk. Yep?
Yes, we have a Uniform Conflict of Interest Disclosure Statement, signed by Bonnie Dickinson. She is the new appointee for the RDC Commission. So that is signed by her and also by Councilman Gary Hall.
This is a standard form. We do this every year, several folks do it, so this is just being open and transparent. So she serves on the Redevelopment Commission, and so if there's not any questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve her disclosure statement.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries. There are two handicap parking permit applications. The first one, Board, we went ahead and approved this pending the application being turned in by the resident at the last meeting. So tonight, all we have to do is approve the application for Madison Phillips Nagy, 2119 Detroit Street. So Jim, is there any reason to deny this?
No.
Having said that, any board member have comments?
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the permit for Madison Phillips Nagy.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. The second one this evening is for Elmer Gibson, 217 North 8th. And Jim, is everything in place?
Everything looks good, yes, sir.
All right. Comments from board members?
I have none.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the handicap parking permit for Elmer Gibson.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is a food vendor application. Business is Papa Curl Ice Cream, 58 North 13th, has filled out a vendor form, and they have submitted their merchant certificate, Marion County Public Health Department certificate. Is there, I don't know what else is pending, Jim.
That was it. They submitted everything that they needed.
They have. Chief, I know you looked into this. Any comment?
Yes, sir.
Would you recommend they be approved?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, having said this, this is not a, this is an ice cream truck, but it's not the type of ice cream truck that travels up and down streets selling ice cream. Trailer that's pulled, and they will be set up in a stationary location, so there's a difference there. Traveling up and down a road, selling food is prohibited. So having said that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the vendor license application for Papa Curl Ice Cream.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. Next up are sanitary sewer and stormwater inspection services for Beech Grove High School. The Beech Grove High School submitted plans for construction of addition to their building at Hornet Park and stormwater improvements. So as part of that, the, especially the sanitary sewer line, will have to be monitored during construction to make sure they are in compliance with local standards. It's a long run, so it's very important that this gets inspected. And for the high school, the city would provide inspection services at $120 per hour. They estimate that the project will last up to 25 days, and the estimated time of inspection is four hours per day. So the estimated cost of inspection services is $12,000 that they will pay to the City of Beech Grove. And in turn, the City of Beech Grove will retain Westler and Associates to conduct the inspection. Same way with the stormwater inspection services for $105 per hour. They estimate that this project will last up to seven months. So they estimate three hours per month for inspections. I may have said four hours per, four hours per day for the sanitary, but this is three hours per month for stormwater. The total estimated cost is $2,205, of which we will bill them, and they in turn, or we in turn will hire Westler and Associates to conduct the inspections. So I'd like to do these individually. If there's not any questions or comments. The first one, and before I do that, Craig, is there, do you have any comment on these?
I do not.
So they're okay to proceed?
Yes.
Okay. The first one is the agreement between the owner, the City of Beech Grove Schools Contractor, and the City of Beech Grove for sanitary construction inspection services at Beech Grove High School. I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries. The next one is the Beech Grove High School Athletic Facilities for Stormwater Improvements between the owner of the property, the contractor, and the City of Beech Grove. So at this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve this agreement as well.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. The next set of agreements is for Bailey Park at 17th Avenue. At the southeast corner of 17th and Southern, they're going to build, put in a road and build five, over 55 and older doubles, which require sanitary sewer and stormwater, stormwater in, stormwater services. So this is a good project on a number of reasons, especially at that area, there have been stormwater drainage problems for as long as I can ever remember. And I think this will go a long way in helping clear this up. So local contractor is going to do this, and this is the same type of agreement that we just approved for the high school, but it's with a private developer. And the first one is the inspection services for the sanitary sewer system with Equiteam LLC and the City of Beech Grove. It's $110 per hour for 20 days. Estimated inspection services is four hours per day. So the estimated cost for inspection services paid to the City of Beech Grove will be $8,800. So having said that, I'll ask for a motion to approve this agreement, agreement between the Equiteam LLC and the City of Beech Grove.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. While we're doing this, if you can picture that property, they're going to run their sewer line out to Southern Avenue, and they are going to connect to the existing sewer system at that point. In order to do that, they are going to have to close Southern Avenue from 17th Street West to probably at least 100 feet in order to tie that in. They were going to submit a letter, which I think they will, but I think it would be good of us to go ahead and make a motion to approve that, and go ahead and approve it, that they close it for the amount of time needed to do the job right. So it's coming up sometime, the construction is going to start sometime in October. So I think it would be good if we went ahead and did that. So any thoughts on that?
We don't have exact time when they're going to-
No.
-start, just kind of a pre-approval?
Yeah. I asked them to submit a letter to the board, but I would rather go ahead and approve it, so that way, if they want to start the 1st of October, they can.
Okay.
So Dave, your thoughts?
I have none. I think it's a good idea to go ahead and approve it.
Yeah. So at this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve Equiteam LLC or their representative to close Southern Avenue from the intersection of 17th and Southern, west east, about 100 feet, in order to put in a, tie in a brand-new sewer system.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. And the last one is the same project, Bailey Park at 17th, but this is for stormwater. So I ask for approval, a fee of $105 for seven months at three hours per month with them, and then they will pay the city, we will bill them, and then we will retain Westler to do the inspections for us. Total amount on this is $2,205. And if there's not any questions, I ask for a motion to approve the agreement between Equiteam LLC and the City of Beech Grove for Stormwater Inspection Services.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. That concludes new business. Comments from board members?
I have none.
I have none.
No comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
The meeting is adjourned. We will convene our city council meeting this evening at 7:00 PM. Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting this evening. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our common council meeting for Tuesday, September the 8th, 2020. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Dave Harrison, Councilman District 5.
Kevin Day, District 4.
Elizabeth Lampin, Council District 1.
Gary Hall, District 2.
Kara Ferguson, City Council at Large.
Biding Templin, Councilman at Large.
Robert Ferguson, District 3.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
James Kaufman, Clerk Treasurer.
Thank you, Council. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, have an invocation from Pastor Dickerson. Pastor?
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for the freedom you've given us in this beautiful country, for our right to assemble. We thank you for our leaders here who are guiding our community, guiding us for our future, for our children and grandchildren. We appreciate their dedication. We pray a blessing upon them and wisdom tonight, that we might enjoy working for the better of our great nation and our great country. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. We'll move to special presentations, and at this time, I'll ask for a moment of silence. Marjorie Hill was an employee of the City of Beech Grove for 14 years. She worked down at the senior center, retired, and she passed away on August the 30th. Her funeral was last Saturday. So if we could, a moment of silence for Ms. Hill. Thank you.
Is anyone here from the American Legion?
Okay, we'll move to, we have two proclamations tonight. The first proclamation is Constitution Week. Would you like to join me, please? Proclamation for Constitution Week 2020. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September the 17th, 2020 marks the 233rd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 19915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Dennis B. Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, do hereby proclaim September the 17th through September the 23rd, 2020, to be Constitution Week in the City of Beech Grove, Indiana. We ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideas the farmers of the Constitution had back in 1787. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, on this 8th of September in the year of our There you go. Take a picture? Thank you for coming up. The American Legion was supposed to do a flag presentation this evening. For as long as I can remember, they always donated the 10 by 15 flags to the City of Beech Grove, and they called at the end of last week, said they would be here, so I'm not sure. Next up is Pregnancy Loss and Awareness Week proclamation. Is anybody here from Franciscan Alliance? Okay, I'll read this into the record. Proclamation to commemorate Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month. Whereas the month of October marks the occasion of National SIDS Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month, observance is across the United States focused on generating public understanding, compassion for bereaved families, and support for medical research. Whereas each year, approximately 1 million pregnancies in the United States end in miscarriage, stillbirth, or the death of a newborn baby. Whereas each year, more than 26,000 families experience the stillbirth of a precious baby. Whereas even the shortest lives are still valuable, and the grief of those who mourn the loss of these lives should not be trivialized. State Health Commissioner, whereas State Health Commissioner Dr. Christina Box has voiced concern about Indiana's infant mortality rate, where on average, seven Hoosier babies for every 1,000 births will not live to see their first birthday, and whereas the observance of SIDS Pregnancy and Infant Loss Month may provide validation to those who have lost a baby through miscarriage, stillbirth, SIDS, or other postnatal death. Whereas recognizing SIDS Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month will provide the citizens of Beech Grove with an opportunity to increase their understanding of the great tragedy involved in the deaths of unborn and newborn babies. Now therefore, I, Dennis B. Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove, do hereby proclaim the month of October Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month in the City of Beech Grove. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, to be affixed this 8th day of September, 2020. This is something that the city has done for many years. They have their annual Walk to Remember. This year, it is October the 10th, but due to the coronavirus, they will not be holding the one in the city park like they always do. They will be down at their medical building at Stones Crossing at 135, and they'll do a small celebration on October the 10th. But the city has always been a very good participant in this, and we want that to continue. So I will pass this on to the folks at Franciscan Alliance, and they'll take it from there. So thank you. Anyone here from the Beech Grove High School Youth Council? We'll move on. At this time, we will do a special presentation concerning Crossroad Engineers and the old St. Francis property. We will not vote on this until, under new business, but I would invite these folks to come up and do a presentation to the council and to the Redevelopment Commission. Jim, I appreciate you inviting them to come tonight, because this involves a property that is in a TIP district. So we want to make sure that they have a clear understanding of what Crossroads desires to do. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Trent Newport, who is the president of Crossroads- who is the president of Crossroads, and Vicky Kane, who is Stimulus Company. Where, she's in the back, there she is. Come on up, and the council has the packet, and the RDC has the packet. So...
Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Good evening, thank you so much for having us today. As Mayor Buckley said, my name is Vicky Kane, I am with Stimulus. And I have here with me Trent Newport of Crossroad Engineers. We are here today to discuss a proposal that we, an offer, that we have received from Marion County for a three-year, 100% abatement for Crossroad Engineers potentially developing their new headquarters on a portion of the old St. Francis site. So, we just want to walk you through a little bit about the company, and then at the end, if you have any questions, we are happy to, happy to take those questions. So, Crossroad Engineers is an engineering, surveying, and consulting firm that was established in 1995. It has been located here in Beech Grove for the last 24 years. It focuses on transportation and development-based consulting, building quality infrastructure across the state. Some of these examples, as you'll see in the PowerPoint, road and bridge design, residential and commercial site development design, surveying, gridway engineering, and roundabout analysis and design. Currently, Crossroad employs about 50 people, several of which are Beech Grove residents. So, Crossroad is growing, and they need a new headquarter location. They would like nothing more than to keep, keep their business right here in Beech Grove. And that, and that is why we are here today seeking your approval, your support, I should say, of this three-year, 100% abatement. The proposed site is a portion of the property where the old St. Francis Hospital was once located. Trent's going to show you some diagrams here in, in just a minute. The project will include the construction of a 16,500-square-foot single-story office building, as well as a separate garage building. Additionally, the project's going to do some infrastructure updates, parking, paving work, some work there on 17th Street. So, so really just some on-site improvements in addition to potentially building a new headquarter facility. So, the benefits of this project, if this project were to move forward here in Beech Grove, Crossroad would be looking at a capital investment of about $2.5 million. The addition of 10 new jobs, with average wages of approximately $50,000 plus benefits. This would also, you know, be redevelopment of this vacant land, and it would add to the tax base here in, here in Beech Grove. The project timeline, if, if we were to be able to get this abatement approved, Crossroad would love to begin construction later this year. They hope to have construction complete by the summer of 2021. They'll be finishing up landscaping later that fall. And then by 2024, they would anticipate having those 10 additional employees hired. I think we talked about the breakdown being a couple of employees a year until they get up to the, the 10 years. So, you'll see then kind of the overall St. Francis site, and I'll hand it over to Trent here for a little bit to just kind of talk you through what, what they'd like to build at the site and how that might look.
Thanks, Vicky, and I know all this is in your packet for those of you who have it, but I thought I'd bring... Sorry, Trent Newport, President of Crossroad Engineers. I thought I'd bring a couple of the slides that are in the packet just so that everybody could kind of see in a larger scale. So, the, the top one here is our actual site plan. You, you have in your packet a picture that shows the entire development of, of St. Francis property. This is just 2.8 acres out of the southwest corner of that, or also being on the northeast corner of Albany and, and 17th, which is where the roundabout's at. And a roundabout that we designed, and also the first roundabout in Marion County, if you weren't, if you don't remember that part. So, 2.8 acres, we have access using drives on, an existing drive that's on Albany, which is effectively a right-in, right-out only because of the median, and then a drive up that lines up across with the drive of that development that's in the northwest quadrant. This is the 16,500-square-foot building that Vicky mentioned, and the parking surrounding, and then the garage is up on the northeast corner. For reference, this little cutout of the property here is the new trailhead that the city has just completed recently. So, it's, it's kind of towards the southeast corner of, of our property. And then this is a rendering of what the building looks like. In, in hopes of doing this, we're trying to match with kind of the brick nature of what St. Francis was. We've obviously tried to work with them on, on those kind of things as well. But we want it to be a nice building. It's actually, you know, we've been, I think Vicky mentioned, in Beech Grove for 24 years. The first building we were in was the, the ear, ear and nose building that's just to the east of Lamping Cleaners there. We were there for a few years, I believe. We actually bought that building and then sold it, and then we bought the building that we're in currently down on Sherman from Doc Christie and another doctor, and we've been there since then. We grew, we moved into that building, and we were about half of it. We've grown into the entire 7,500-square-foot building. We've been at that for a while, and, and we've been busting at the seams for a while. So, even in today's environment, our industry, we think, is healthy, and this is long overdue for us to, to have a new place that where you can all fit comfortably. So, that's it, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
And just kind of the last, the last couple of slides here, I probably don't need to tell you much about their community involvement, because with them being here for the past 24 years, you guys already know that this is a great company, and a company that is definitely an asset to the Beech Grove area. But they are an active community member. They do encourage their employees to volunteer as a company. They support several different, several different organizations. Then just kind of on the last page, I always just like to point out, to talk briefly about the job recruitment plan. Crossroad, as I mentioned before, has employees right from this, right from Beech Grove, the Beech Grove area. And they'll continue to have a strong emphasis on hiring local employees. Additionally, once, once employees are hired, Crossroad works with them to train them and to help them move up in the company. And as we talked about before, these, these wages, these 10 jobs, 50,000, about 50,000 a job, a year. So, these are really good, good-paying jobs. I, I think that that basically sums up our presentation. If anybody has questions, between the two of us, we're happy to try our best to answer them.
I have a...
A question back here.
Okay. Go ahead.
St. Francis is not currently paying any property tax on that property anyway, are they?
Correct.
Has Cross, is Crossroads purchasing a piece of this land? Are you leasing it? How are you getting the acquisition of this property?
Yeah, our, our, it would be purchasing.
And this from Franciscan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment about when we were talking about community involvement, and I want to just call the attention that Crossroad did, did support our Beautify Beech Grove non-for-profit, and they've given, they've donated for that walk, which in turn gives us, you know, we do projects across, around the city for Beautify Beech Grove. So, I wanted to add that, just for public comment, that the community, for community involvement.
Thank you so much.
They have been helpful with donations for that cause.
Can you address the abatement issue?
What's, what specifically? Just kind of how the abatement would, would work, or?
Yes, what are you looking to be abated? How much money, over what period of time?
Okay.
What would cost to the city be, be able to grant you that abatement in terms of potential loss of revenue?
Yes. So, so this is a little bit of a unique, Indiana generally is, kind of their typical abatement is a 10-year decreasing abatement. So, the first year, you would be looking at 100% of abatement, second year 90%, 80%, working your way down. Is Indiana's typical abatement structure. So, here, we are looking at doing a three-year, 100% abatement. That would be 100% abated taxes on the land improvements. So, land itself cannot be abated, the value of land cannot be abated. So, this would be on the improvements on the land. Beech Grove is in a little bit of a unique situation in that it has a very high tax rate, which is not something that was really accounted for when Indiana was putting together their abatement structure. So, what we're looking for is three years at 100% rather than the 10 years of kind of the decreasing value and abatement. And that is really a benefit both for Beech Grove and for the client. It's a benefit for Beech Grove in that after three years, they'll be seeing 100% of the revenue on this newly-developed property. And it's a benefit for the company because, because of Beech Grove's higher tax rate, the company would not see much of a benefit in the later years of the abatement. So, we like to think of this as a win-win. This would be adding to the tax base in Beech Grove, and, and having those three years of abated expenses is, is something that makes Beech Grove an attractive place to locate the headquarters. And then after the three-year time period, Crossroad would, would be paying 100% of the taxes on the improvements.
Can you quantify any of this over the three-year period?
So...
Based on the improvements you had to say?
Yeah, based on the improvements, and this is an imperfect science. It, I mean, that probably goes without saying. Marion County, in their offer letter to us, has estimated the value of the abatement as, at being at around $170,000.
For the three-year period?
For the three-year period, yes. And Marion County has also, one thing to mention with that as well, is Marion County has started a program where anybody who receives abatement through Marion County is required to give back 5% of the abatement value to the community, focusing on either childcare or training initiatives. So, we have been working with Marion County to talk to them about how we're going to do that. So, 5% of the abatement value that the company receives will be dumped right back into the community to go towards training and childcare are their big focuses right now. Kind of some of the things that are really hindering the development of, of employees. You're welcome.
Are there other sites on the horizon, or is this due?
This is really the site that...
For our company?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Well, we've always had one office building our entire 25 years, and, you know, the focus of our current ownership is to, to do that. That's why this building is 16, is proposed to be 16,500 compared to the 7,500 that we're in. It's really built for growth. We will not be filled up in the building, so we grow when we move in there, hopefully, but there's room for growth there.
Are there any other questions? All right, well, thank you so much for your time. We appreciate you allowing us to be here tonight.
Thank you very much.
If a company asks for a tax abatement, and the tax abate, or the company is going to locate in a TIF district, then the governing body, legislative body, has to approve the abatement locally. If Crossroads was building this building in an area that is not in the TIF district, then the council would not have no jurisdiction for the abatement. It would be passed through Marion County. So, this is why the RDC should have an understanding of what's going on in the TIF district, and how will it, and how, and how it will affect them three years from now. So, later tonight, the council will hear a resolution on this matter, and then we'll go from there. So... We'll move on to reading of the minutes. In front of you is a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, August 3rd. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections. If there are no questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Up next, thank you, Council. Up next is public comments. Counselor?
First is Ashley Pyle, yeah. So, folks, we have two people who signed up to speak, so I really think he is...
Good afternoon, or good evening. I'm Ashley Pyle, at 67, South Second Avenue. And this is Dylan, my son. But we came, we sent an email to the council asking for council to consider putting in stop signs at Second and Alton. And I appreciate to the council members who responded, but just wanted to bring it up to everybody and make sure that, to share that it is important for us. And I am so sorry, it's been a busy day. School, soccer, and then this, so... But we do have a school bus stop there as well. So, I did notice that the other day. So, it is important. We've noticed that there's more traffic, more people are parking on the streets. And that's why we brought it up. I have another neighbor who was concerned about it as well, who had almost gotten hit a few times crossing over on, from Second, from Alton. And... Yeah, oh. And so, that was why we brought it up to the council, for a safety concern. So, hope you guys consider, and hopefully we get this in soon. I think it is a need. There's more people on our streets, more children, and the closest stop sign is at Fifth and Alton. So, but that's all we have. Any questions?
I believe the police department has responded in favor of it as well.
Yes, they have. So, thank you, Chief Maurice. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Linda Miller?
Hello.
Hello.
Can everyone hear me well? Is it okay if I bring this down? Thank you. Okay, my name is Linda Miller. I live at 91 South Third. I'm at South Third and Alton. I've been in my home, I purchased my home one year ago, and I'm actually ready to put it up for sale. I have several issues there on South Third, but for tonight, I would like to speak about the parking issue. I understand that it is public parking. I fully understand this. But how many cars can we have to one family when it affects other homeowners? For an instance, and this is personal, my neighbor, Bill Thomas, is here. He lives right next door to me. He does have an in-home nurse that comes, and a lot of times, he can't even, she cannot even park in front of his home to visit with him. She has to pull around the alley and park on his concrete park to the garage. But at any given time, there are four vehicles, same vehicle, same family, which this be, this family has six vehicles. Any given time, in front of my house, truck, truck, small car, truck, in front of our home, that stays there for days. When COVID first came about and we were all stuck at home, there was a truck that sat in front of my home for six and a half weeks and did not move, because I was home. Did not know who it belonged to. And after six and a half weeks, I looked at my blinds, and there this owner was, having to jump-start it because it wouldn't even start after six and a half weeks. So... So, what I am asking, and, and one other thing too, in July, and I didn't write down the date in July, but in July, I did speak with Kathy at the mayor's office, Kathy Chapel, and she had informed me that the parking ordinance had been given over to the police department. and she had informed me that the parking ordinance had been given over to the police department. She asked that I call them. I did, and I don't remember exactly if it was Chief Maurice or Mercury. But I spoke with one of them, and it was basically, "Public parking, we can't do anything." So I let it go. And then in August, on August 9th, there was an incident with this vehicle, but I don't want to go into that. August 10th, I did call the police department. Officer Garrison came out to my home, and I told him about the incident the day before. And right then and there, the two particular vehicles are in front of my home. And I asked if he could check on violations. He said he would, because the people that own all these vehicles live down the middle of the road, across the street, and they lined all their vehicles up on the opposite side of the road. So what I am asking you is, would you revisit the parking ordinance and see if we can't make some changes? And with it being given to the police department, perhaps everyone can get together and see what we might be able to do. The whole community, there might be an issue with parking in this whole community. I don't know. But I do ask that you revisit the parking issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Noe Benet.
Three minutes, sir.
Pardon?
Three minutes.
Three minutes, all I get?
That's it.
Hi, mayor, councilman. I just want to, before I get to my questions, I want to compliment Gary Hall. I've been in Beach Grove, I live in 121 South Eighth, and I've been in Beach Grove 35 years. In the last two months, two, two months, I got more respect for that guy than anybody I ever had in Beach Grove. He has answered my questions. He has come back to me with response. And he's the man, guaranteed. Anyway, my first question is, because I only got three minutes. My first question is, what happens with the compliance money that the fines are given?
Sir, public comment is where you make a comment on something. I'm not sure if the council wants to engage you. Do you have a specific question to the counselor? I suggest you do that at a different time, and this is not the one.
Oh, okay. Then who do I give that to?
Mr. Obama sounds like he's fantastic.
Anyway, all right, we'll forego that one. The other, well, all I got's questions. So my other question is, I've lived here 35 years. Like I said, in the last three years, I raised my taxes triple in three years, and I got water running into my garage. So is there any response to that?
How does water run into your garage?
Because the alley is higher than my garage is.
Where's it run in at?
In my garage, from the alley.
How does it get in, through what?
Because they've, they've put so much gravel down on the alley in the last 20 years that it's higher than my garage is.
What I'm saying is, does it come through a doorway?
Yeah, it runs in my garage door. So, and I've responded, or I've asked for help from the city, and I get no response.
If I could answer that now, I know we've been talking, obviously. Brad did state when they, the Manning, because I know Phil was involved with an accident, which I shared with you as well, when they had the time, they'll come out and use that grater, that quarter ton, I think it's the verbiage. Remember that front-end loader?
Yeah.
They'll use that to grade. But also, we also talked about the manholes that were covered with the gravel. So if years of that being dropped on there, that's, that's the problem. So there's a crown, Dave, and the water just goes east and west.
The prob, the problem is, they got, when they got rid of the grater, when Beach Grove got rid of the grater, that's when all the alleys went to hell. When they sold the grater, or got rid of the grater, or whatever. And the bottom line, the bottom line is, they got to either rent a grater or buy another grater, or whatever. I know my three minutes is up, but I need some help from somebody to keep from water running in my garage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Kevin Cocker.
My name is Kevin Cocker, 944 Timber Grove Place, Beach Grove, Indiana. I've been before the council before, but I wanted to say, council and to the mayor, I've been here before about issues dealing with sewers. And at that time, I went through and followed all the steps and all the studies. And I went to a meeting in February where I was told that this stormwater runoff was infiltrating our system to the tune of 40-some percent. And the mayor, you correct me if I'm wrong, you said to me at that time, when I brought up, well, what are we going to do about it? And you said, "Hold that thought, I'll get back to you." But you never did. And I'm here tonight to ask each and every one of you, what kind of a plan do we have? This poor gentleman said it's going in his garage. I got my sewer bill raised, and you know what? We're treating 40% of our wastewater with stormwater mixed in it. Now I ask you, how can this town get well doing things like that? All I ask for is come up with a plan. And Mr. Harris, you were pretty straightforward with me when I first came here the first time. I know Ms. Lamping was too, didn't want to know why I was here. Well, I'm here because it's people like me that have to oversee why you're not doing what you need to do. This is your second trip, your second trip with me. You were elected when I came here. You're here now, and we're running this pony right through the show again.
It's actually my third trip.
Well, it may be three trips and nothing got done. All I want to do is come up with a plan. You people are doing hodgepodge. And then you want citizens to have to pay for it down the road. And, oh, we're going to create more fluff that's going to get more money coming to the community. I hear that word "TIF" one more time, I'm going to throw up. You know, TIFs are good, but you better be able to pay the bill. Right now, ladies and gentlemen, we're not getting the job done. And Ms. Lamping, I want you to know, I watch you on RDC meetings, and it absolutely amazes me how you come up scripted. And then when someone asks you a question about particulars, you can't give an answer. You want to spend our money, you better have some answers. That's my statement. And all I asked for was to have a plan and for somebody to get back to me. That's all I asked for. That's what the citizens want. You second trips around the, the road, you ought to be especially ashamed of yourselves. You dumped on these poor new council members. You dumped on them. You know what's going on. Yes, you did. You want to engage me?
I'll engage you.
You're the guy that jumped me when I first came in here. Yeah, you did. You want to know why I was here. Well, you jumped me too, sir.
Nobody jumped.
And you're just the attorney. I have a reason for you.
You're done, thank you.
Mr. Coker, thank you.
I'm done, because I speak truth. You don't.
Thank you, sir, for your time.
Next is Bonnie Dickinson.
Good evening, I'm Bonnie Dickinson, and I reside at 509 Birch Street. I come before the council this evening with a question and a proposal. On the advice of my RDC president, Mrs. Lamping, and due to the fact that several council members chose not to answer my email where I posed these questions along with others. Several did answer, and I appreciate that, thank you. My first question was, does the city of Beach Grove have a master plan that shows our plans for the future? And where can I find that plan? Second is the proposal. I propose that the council and the redevelopment commission host a workshop where we can discuss projects and needed reconstructions. We could discuss our vision for the city and where we want to be in two, three, five years. We could set goals of where to use the monies available to the city through the council and through the RDC. I propose that Mrs. Lamping, as the RDC president and a representative from the council, plan and set up this workshop before the next council meeting so we can get our projects going forth. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you.
Next is Dan Bailey. Dan Bailey? Susie McNamara?
Good evening, councilors. I got to tell you, being honest, I am so glad we are so done with all of this. I have not missed all this one bit. But I'm here tonight to speak as a citizen and also on behalf of my husband, Dan, who was the previous clerk treasurer. I'm going to start with, first off, just real quick. The budget, the appropriations, if you look at it, and the way the budget is done, years ago, before Daniel came in, everything was dumped in the BOW pretty much all the time. And there was a gentleman named Joey Fox, who was assistant mayor to Terry Dilk. And he redid it so that it made it more transparent. Each department had the health insurance, had the, you know, like your eye, dental, all that in there. Each department had everything so that you could see where your money was being spent all the time. Well, I noticed, Gary brought me an appropriation report, and I noticed there's two new departments. One's Department 16 in the BOW, and it doesn't have anything appropriated in it, obviously, but I think they're planning on doing it in this year's budget. And what it is, is dumping everything back into the BOW again, their health insurance, their dental insurance, their eye insurance, and all that. And then there's also another department, it's called BOW Promotional, that they've created in that appropriation report that can't be, neither of those can be used till next year. But anyway, I wanted to make that point because that's not a good idea. And keep it the way the budget is set up. It's set up for a reason, for transparency. Secondly, I'd love to see the bank statements put back online, and you guys make an ordinance that requires clerk treasurers to put those financial reports and bank statements online. It'd be nice to view them. Lastly, there's an additional appropriation tonight, $200,000 for fire, $200,000 for police. That money is in the public safety tax fund. All that needs to be done is a voucher created and a, receipted into the general fund. Been done like that for eight years with Daniel. State Board of Council audited him, said it's fine. The reason he did it that way is because the payroll company they use doesn't know how to separate the overtime money or to put a number in to the public safety tax to use for the overtime money and the salaries. And Buddy and Dave and Kevin should remember the fact that that $200,000 that's in there for salaries, that Frank Maschere brought that up, and Daniel called Bart Brown and called Charlie Pride, because state statute does not say that that can be done. But they both said, "Do it, everybody else is doing it, do it." So we put $200,000 in salaries in the public safety tax and $200,000 in overtime. And it does not have to be appropriated. The State Board of Accounts has accepted Daniel doing it that way for the last seven years. He's had, you can check the audits, it's never been a problem. That's one thing. Number two, the $400,000, did you get the check from St. Francis on there? Did you deposit it? Where's it receipted in at?
It's in the general fund.
No, it's not. What's the appropriation number? So it's not been appropriated. But besides that, when Daniel got money like that, rather than appropriate it, I'm almost done, rather than appropriate it into the general fund, what he did was he created a fund for each project, and State Board of Accounts complimented him on this. And he would have a revenue and an appropriation number on it. He also kept an Excel, Excel book that had the spreadsheets for each project back to 2012, and it's on the computer. And he would, like the Main Street, he created a fund for that, and everything was paid out of it. All the monies were receipted in it. He never did an additional appropriation for anything that they spent with those funds, and it was done fine. And lastly, I want to say, the gateway came in, the first year Daniel was in office, he put that budget in every year, he did that budget every year. Without the mayor doing it or the council doing it, they would send him emails, and he would put in what needs to be done. And I believe that Jeff Peters is probably putting in the stuff in the gateway now. So that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Next is Trent. Oh, sorry, no.
I'm sorry, can I just say one last thing? Daniel did say there is money in the budget, and it's due for raises for all the city employees also.
Next is Greg Cadozer.
Hello, everybody, I'm Greg Cadozer, and this is my partner, Jeff Dees. We own the Fifth Avenue Grill and Bar at Fifth and Main. We just opened six weeks ago. Want to thank you all. You've done a great job of coming and supporting us, and we've done a really good job. And you guys have done a good job of supporting us. What we'd just like to get support for is, because of coronavirus, we have a lot of customers that don't want to come inside and sit inside. So we'd like to set up outside seating, outside tent, do some social distancing so people can, you know, enjoy a cool fall night and a nice drink and a nice beer and a good meal. Just to let you know, our sales are 75% food, 25% alcohol. So we're a restaurant, restaurant first. And we would just like to enhance our setting. We'd also like to look at and get your support on maybe some outside seating on Main Street, sit down with the RDC to discuss that. So, you know, what we've seen is about 50% of our, 50% of our customers are not in Beach Grove, but outside of Beach Grove. So we are bringing in new revenue and a new customer base. So we're just looking for support to do the right thing and be a destination spot for people to come from, from outside of Beach Grove. Anything you want to talk about, Jeff? Real, real simple, short to the point. Thanks for your support.
Thank you.
Hey, Greg, can I ask you a question? Do you have a dollar amount you guys are looking to invest, or, I mean?
I mean, we'd just like to look and see what was done at other, other businesses as far as the seating on Main Street. We'd like to match whatever we need to do to get that done, or whatever funds are there. I mean, when people drive down Main Street, it's nice seeing people sitting outside on Main Street, eating. We are not a nightclub, we are a restaurant. We just want to, and we are kid-friendly, smoke-free, family environment. And we just want to enhance, you know, the destination coming to Beach Grove.
Do you have that much room out front?
Well, there's some plants out there, so we'd like to see what we can do to reposition those plants, not kill them, put them someplace else, and, you know, put concrete down, put some seating, and put some railing out there, just similar to other businesses on Main Street.
Okay.
Okay. Any more questions?
One, one quick thing, you have a little sketch I just did today, if you guys want to.
Yeah, I'd like to.
Sure.
That's a border wolf fish. Get this area, this is vegetation.
Get this area, this is vegetation here and concrete there through the fence. Kind of out front.
Can you email, could you email that to us?
Sure, sure. I just made this quick sketch.
Well, that'd be great.
If we wanted to get a little further.
Yeah. I think there's other areas that are talking about, yeah, yeah. I think there's other areas that are talking about that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's awesome.
You guys stay fair with Susie?
50%, we're doing pretty well.
Good, good.
Obviously, not as well as we'd like to. But it's been going pretty well. I mean, especially on Friday's every night, so we've done, there's been, last week, we had a little bit of wait to get in.
Did they do First Friday?
We had to do the social distancing.
Did they have First Friday this last Friday? Did you?
Yeah, we've, we've done the first, we've been open six weeks, so we've had two First Fridays.
Did you have a pretty decent turnout?
The first Friday, we had about a 40-minute wait. This past week was about a 15, 20-minute wait. It's been very, very successful.
Good, good.
Very successful.
How soon are you guys ready to do this? I mean?
Tomorrow. Especially, we'd like to put up a tent in our parking lot, we can block off the parking lot and make it safe for everybody to sit, and we'll seat about 10 tables, you know, enough to, and social distancing, so people can enjoy a beautiful fall evening and have an ice meal.
Absolutely.
So.
Thank you.
Is there anything it gets city ordinance to allow them to use our parking lot as seating?
They have, they have an entertainment permit through the state of Indiana Homeland Security, and, so they can set up shop on the parking lot. They could do it tonight, because that is private property. They put up a tent, they'll have to be inspected, but that's very small detail. But they can go ahead and set up shop and have outside seating on, in their own private property. If they come out onto the sidewalk, that becomes an easement issue, and the only thing they would have to do there is supply the city with a certificate of insurance, naming the city as additionally insured, and they have to maintain 36 inches of horizontal exiting to allow people to walk through the sidewalk. But no, they could set up a tent tonight if they want to.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Committee reports. The ABC, she notified me that the Grove Sports Bar had no violations and was renewed today at the monthly meeting. And that was the only activity for the ABC. RDC, Liz?
Yes, the RDC met at these chambers on August the 20th. We just had quite a lengthy discussion on goals and planning. We approved our accounts payable in the amount of $266,783.78. Part of that was the last bond payment of the year. Mr. Peters was kind enough to send me an email, and I shared that with the council on our projections for TIF monies for the, for December, as well as next year. And then the RDC general fund, thanks to Mr. Kaufman, the number is $462,243.52. We discussed goal planning, to talk about setting aside monies for the CSX property. There was also discussion to determine our potential debt for sanitary collection system repairs. Mr. Hall, I could defer to him, and he could explain better to the council, because I don't want to, I would prefer that he explained to the council about his desire for the RDC for debt, considering debt for sanitary collection systems. So I'll defer to Mr. Hall to kind of explain how that came about.
The reason that came up, actually, I was in the process of giving the mayor a compliment before I was interrupted, based on last year's administration and what was done. But in doing that, the simplicity was, the topic, the way it was approached, and again, I was in the back row as a citizen, I had signed up to speak or anything, and it came up, and listening to the, to the RDC committee, it was very refreshing, it was very open, it was great communication, which I'm very thankful for that. And then there was the money, there was a money issue when the RDC's attorney tried to discuss that issue. That didn't seem to be resolved, but it broke down to, there's going to be X amount of money available to do a project. And the simplicity that I had from, at the podium, speaking as a citizen, not as a council person, my question was this, why are we as taxpayers giving hundreds of thousands of dollars of breaks to multimillion-dollar companies when we could take those monies and help our infrastructure and pay cash for that? And that was the simplicity of it. The dollar amount never really came out. I think today, like Mrs. Lamping said, there was projected money, ballpark of $700,000 after the deposits made in December, and Mr. Kaufman could confirm that. Those monies, that's cash on hand. So again, Mrs. Dickinson was given the responsibility of researching this possibility, and she did that. I replied to her email, and we spoke. And within that, the simplicity was, we as a council, if we continue to do business as we do, we can look back, and historically, it's written in stone where we've gotten. It's, it's business as usual. But if we were to rethink things and put the people first, and, and have a product, again, have a plan, and we could budget like Mr. Ferguson had spoke back in July, I think, with, with Brad, the monies are there if we just prioritize things. And then, and again, this isn't scripted, but I think when Kevin was speaking about having a plan, that would be in place. Now, is it possible we don't eat some of our ghosts? Sure it is, we're human, we're gonna mess up. But just the opposite, we could get in there, like Bobby said earlier, we could get in there, and things might not be as bad as we think they are, which, again, that's good. And we could continue on aggressively trying to repair things. That was the thing, the money's there. You have to start off, you know, who's in charge and how we want to look at a vision. So do we have a vision? And when I've asked that question before as a citizen, I've never gotten an answer. And so there's my answer, we don't have a vision, so.
Could you share with me an email, please, the, and the rest of the RDC? I don't think I got that. You said you talked to Mrs. Dickinson about?
It's the, it's the email that she sent out requesting inputs. She referred to her. Yeah. Bonnie, do you know when you sent that out?
Okay, I'll look, I'll look back through. Thank you, thank you.
Could you look it up and let Ms. Lamping know that?
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Any questions? Thank you.
Gary, in all due respect. If you do not entice businesses who are interested in coming here with an incentive to get them here, chances are they are not going to come here. And you will remain stagnant.
What, I'm, please explain that.
Crossroads might be the exception. Because they're a local company, but if Crossroads, let's say Crossroads is on the west side, and they really didn't have a vested interest in Beech Grove, and we offer them three years, they may not decide to come here. They may want a different incentive. So you have to be, you have to do that. If you don't do that, you take the risk of not having any new business. And then you'll, then you'll stumble. So I respectfully disagree with what you said. On the comprehensive plan, there's three comprehensive plans in the city of Beech Grove. One is the Civil City, which is under, has been under development for the last two years. The last one was in 2008. The RDC has a comprehensive redevelopment plan.
Here's the RDC. Why don't you?
Hey, whoa, 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 whoa. Hey, hey, whoa, 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 I'm talking. Did you hear me talk when you were talking?
You know what?
No.
I've heard this bag of trips.
And the Parks Department has the master plan. Every five years, the park has to redo a plan. So there's three plans out there. Depends on what you're looking for. So the city's civil plan will be up probably in another year or so. It takes a long while to do it. It's under final review, so that's, a couple people have asked that, so I thought I would put that out there.
Okay, can I, can I follow up on your question to me? You said, what's the frequency on that, that plan?
I don't know on the Civil City, the redevelopment, I'm not sure, but the parks is five years.
Okay, but the city, that's what I can, that's the?
The last one, Gary, was 2008, I think.
Eight?
Yeah.
Twelve years ago.
Twelve years ago, and then we started working on it about two years ago, and it's up for final draft. It takes a little while. Yes, Bonnie?
Is that then published on the website?
When it's, not in draft form, not in draft form. In final version, it'll come in front of the council, and the council will have to approve it.
But then, once it's approved, will it be like a PDF on the website?
Sure, it's too large to, yes, it would have to be in that format. All right, we'll move to unfinished business, carried over from the last meeting. Yeah? Oh, I'm so sorry.
City Hall remains closed to the public. Permits are still being received and processed on a timely basis. Citizens are still able to pay their surrogals online, by phone, by mail, or by dropping their payment off in the 24-hour Dropbox. We have installed a new Dropbox on the front steps of City Hall. This will encourage social distancing and reduce exposure to our employees. As you might have heard, there was a glitch in the billings, billings this month for commercial accounts. Citizens updated their software, which required the city of Beech Grove to update ours. Somewhere in the update, commercial accounts were billed at substantially high amounts. We are correcting them as we are notified, and we'll see that everything is fixed prior to the next billing cycle. I continue to stress the need to limit spending on any items that are non-essential to all department heads. We have met with each department head to discuss current budgets and any needs they foresee for next year. Figures are being entered into Gateway, and we will be ready for your review in time for the budget workshop scheduled for later this month. I'm currently working with the Marion County Office of Finance and Management for COVID-19 reimbursements. The city of Beech Grove was allocated $211,741, which is calculated based on population. I have submitted one reimbursement request with plans to submit a few more before, before the September 30th deadline. On the agenda tonight are additional appropriation requests. A couple of these are standard requests that occur every year, and I'll answer any questions you might have. Bank account balances are listed below as of today, September 8th, 2020. These totals are prior to the claims that were approved earlier this evening. City Corporation, $3,121,423.92. Utilities, $121,871.45. Criminal Investigation Fund, $42,656.19. RDC General, $462,243.52. And then the RDC Debt Service, $240,000. If you have any questions at all, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Compliance Division, you should have that in your packet, and the Greenscape Commission did not meet. I want to go back on a comment that was made about the State Board of Accounts, and all these, all these accounts being moved into one. I'm not going to let Jim get thrown under the bus. When you pay a utility bill, you have to go through about 10 procedures to pay the bill. Same way with any utility you have, any health insurance, any pension, you have to appropriate it 10 times, nine or 10 times to do a check. So you simplify that by putting it in one category. The department head never sees a utility bill. The department head never sees an insurance payment. The department head never sees a department, or a pension payment. The only person that ever sees that is the clerk. So why would you have every, every one of those claims get taken out of 10 different accounts? Jim called the State Board of Accounts, you know what they told him? You're talking to the wrong group. You need to talk to the DLGF. You know what the DLF told him? That's the preferred way to do it, one account. And that's what they recommend that you do. So that was brought out tonight, and I'm not going to let Jim take that. So it simplifies the process on bills that the department head never, ever sees.
Yeah. Real quick, for compliance, there was a question posed by a citizen about the money that's turned in to compliance for tickets outside to them. Is there a line item where that money is accounted for when it's turned into the city?
It goes, I'll let Jim answer. Depends on what the judge does. If the judge finds it guilty, or whatever, they pay it, it goes, it gets receipted into the general fund.
Okay.
And then it's redispersed. Unfinished business, General Ordinance Number 6, 2020, is up for approval on second reading only. This time I'll ask for a motion, well, let me look at it here real quick.
We're going to do it second and third tonight.
Second and third tonight. But I want to see if it's more than one page long. It's one page long, so it has to be read into the record. So at this time, I'll ask the clerk to read General Ordinance Number 6, 2020 into the record for second reading.
General Ordinance Number 6, 2020. General Ordinance Number 6, 2020 is an ordinance that amends Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beech Grove concerning traffic schedules. Whereas the city of Beech Grove recently completed a roundabout project at the intersection of Churchman Bypass, Arlington Avenue, Big Four Road, and whereas NDOT has established a speed limit of 15 miles per hour when entering the roundabout, and whereas this is consistent with the current roundabout at Albany Street, 17th Avenue, Churchman Avenue. Now therefore be it affirmed that the common council desires to amend Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beech Grove concerning traffic schedules. Now therefore be it further affirmed that the following amendment be added to Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances. Chapter 77 Traffic Schedules, Schedule, Speed Limits, subsection A8, add the following: Churchman Bypass, Arlington Avenue, and Big Four Road. Now be it affirmed that the common council desires to amend Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beech Grove. Now therefore be it further affirmed that the ordinance only applies to Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beech Grove and no other chapter. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance shall go into effect 30 days after passage by the common council. Signed by the council president pro tem, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor. Traffic Schedules. 17th Avenue South from roundabout to Main Street, I'm sorry. Yeah, those are the ones that were mentioned.
No, this was, that's not part of the ordinance. That's just.
Yeah.
General Ordinance Number 6, 2020 is up for approval on second reading only. This time I'll ask for a motion to approve. I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. General Ordinance Number 6, 2020 is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. This time I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number 6, 2020 is an ordinance that amends Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beech Grove concerning traffic schedules. Whereas the city of Beech Grove recently completed a roundabout project at the intersection of Churchman Bypass, Arlington Avenue, Big Four Road, and whereas NDOT has established a speed limit of 15 miles per hour when entering the roundabout, and whereas this is consistent with the current roundabout at Albany Street, 17th Avenue, Churchman Avenue. Now therefore be it affirmed that the common council desires to amend Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beech Grove concerning traffic schedules. Now further be it, now therefore be it further affirmed that the following amendment be added to Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances. Chapter 77 Traffic Schedules, Schedule, Speed Limits, subsection A8, add the following: Churchman Bypass, Arlington Avenue, and Big Four Road. Now be it affirmed that the common council desires to amend Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beech Grove. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance only applies to Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beech Grove and no other chapter. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance shall go into effect 30 days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president pro tem, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
General Ordinance Number 6, 2020 is up for approval on third and final reading. This time I'll ask a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Please register your vote.
Thank you, sir.
We'll move to new business. First item is Resolution Number 7, 2020, Statement of Benefits. This is a result of a presentation earlier this evening involving Crossroad Engineers, and I'll open the floor back up for any discussion that you may have. If not, I'll ask the clerk to read Resolution Number 7, 2020 into the record, please.
City of Beech Grove Common Council, General, General Resolution Number 7, 2020. Proposal for a general resolution to approve the state of benefits of CRE Properties LLC for the benefit of Crossroad Engineers PC, hereafter referred to as applicant. An applicant for tax abatement for property located in an allocation area as defined by Indiana Code 36-7-15.1-26. Whereas Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1 allows an abatement of property taxes attributable to redevelopment, rehabilitation activities, or installation of new equipment in economic revitalization areas, each hearing after referred to as a project. And whereas pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12-1 requires an applicant for economic revitalization area designation to provide a statement of benefits and requires the NBC for it makes a decision to designate the area as an economic revitalization area. To determine that, the estimated value of project is reasonable for projects of that nature. Two, the estimated employment at that indicated annual, at the indicated annual salaries for a project in the statement of benefits can reasonably be expected. Three, a project can be reasonably expected to yield the benefits identified in the statement of benefits. And four, the totality of benefits arising from a project is sufficient to justify economic revitalization area designation. And whereas pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1-2K is a statement of benefits for property located within an allocation area as defined by Indiana Code 36-7-15.1-26, may not be approved unless the city of Beech Grove Common Council, herein referred to as council, adopts a resolution approving the statement of benefits. And whereas the applicant has submitted a real property statement of benefits to the NBC as part of its application for economic revitalization area designation for property where applicant's project will occur, located within an allocation area as defined by Indiana Code 36-7-15.1-26. And whereas NBC will consider the applicant's statement of benefits pending adoption from the council to allow a designation of economic revitalization area and related tax abatement pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city of Beech Grove Common Council, Indiana. Section 1, the council hereby approves the statement of benefits that was submitted to the NBC as part of the application for economic revitalization area designation by CRE Properties LLC for the benefit of Crossroads Engineers PC. This, section 2, this resolution shall be in effect from and after its passage by the council in compliance with Indiana Code 36-3-4-14.
Thanks, Jim.
Comments from council members? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 7, 2020.
I'll make said motion to approve General Resolution Number 7, 2020.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, do you know the expiration date when that Tiff district is no longer Tiff district for the Saint Francis property?
2030, maybe? I think that's when most of them can come out.
Twenty-five years.
I think. General Ordinance Number 7 is an appropriation ordinance requesting to reappropriate $889,114. And before I ask Jeff Peters to come up, and Jim, I just want to be clear on this. This is not, we are not borrowing $889,114. We are re-appropriating funds that are already in the general fund. And Jim will go through the different appropriations, and then, but first, I would like to call Jeff Peters up. Jeff, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for the opportunity to be here and to help. On the additional appropriations, an appropriation is the authority that you grant as the fiscal body for the clerk treasurer to administer and expend those funds. You have, as the mayor said, a series of funds that are currently receded that are not formally approved for expenditure. So just to kind of run through some of the highlights, you've got a carish provider. You received money into that fund. It's cash on hand that you have. The fire department would like to use that for payroll that was expended during the COVID months. You've got, as you were previously told, there's $400,000 that you, as the fiscal body, have appropriated out of the Public Safety Income Tax Fund for the payment of overtime and other personal services for fire and police. However, there is not a live appropriation in the general fund in fire and police for those purposes. That is to rectify that issue. There is $400,000 in the general fund today that has been receded specifically to be expended on the Greenway project. That, again, this is your opportunity as the fiscal body to publicly approve that for expenditure. And then I believe there's 50-some thousand dollars there as well for, was that a sculpture?
For a hornet statue at the roundabout on Arlington Avenue.
And again, these are funds that have been receded for a specific purpose. They are currently in the general fund. And again, this is your formal procedure to authorize the expenditure of those funds for that purpose. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Donations and everything? Just so everybody's clear in what, what we're doing.
So, everything that he said, if you want to talk about the hornet, the city has received some money to pay for the hornet that will go at the roundabout, the new roundabout over there on Big Four Road and Churchman. So we've gotten $25,000 from Beech Grove City Schools. They wrote us a check for $25,000 from their donation fund. Reeve Riley donated $5,000. Connectors Energy donated $5,000. GAI Consultants donated $2,500. TCU donated $2,500. Shelby Materials donated $2,500. Performance Services donated $5,000. And Taft donated $5,000. Total of $52,000. So that has been receded in, and they donate to the city to be a sponsor of this hornet that'll hopefully come, I'm not sure, sometime later this year. So that's that money there. So it was not budgeted for, it was not expected revenue that we had planned on receiving this year, therefore it was never budgeted for. So we have received it, we decided to be able to spend it now. Public safety taxes, Jeff mentioned, that's the $400,000, 200 for police, 200 for fire. Again, the $400,000 from Franciscan Alliance, they did buy the naming rights to the Franciscan Trail. They had said that they'd be, you know, paying the $400,000 a couple of years ago, but you can't budget for that until you actually get the money. So we have received that revenue, now we need to be able to spend it. So again, that, that money has been received, and it'll go towards our match for the Franciscan Trail that just went to bid, or just got bid out. And then, the other one was $3,800, received donation from the estate of, from, yeah, from, I'm sorry, from the estate of Fred Ferris. So he had left the balance of his estate, of his estate to be donated to the city of Beech Grove once everything else was paid for. So we received that a couple of months ago from whole wager, so that was $3,800. That would go towards paying a plaque at the new trailhead there, over there at the Saint Francis Hospital site. A bronze plaque just stating this is where the hospital was, saying this is what the site, the original site of the hospital. So that's there, so it's just to pay for that fund, pay for that plaque there. And then, there was the CARES Act. So since we do offer ambulance services, we are automatically eligible for reimbursements from the CARES Act. So we received $26,000 or so. So, you know, chief would like to submit that on the salaries and overtime, so that's that. And then, the last one was $10,000 for, it was budgeted for the DPW to get a new truck this year. It was budgeted for, I believe, 46, I believe. The balance of that was money that we received from the removal of tanks out of DPW. So we, we received money from environmental management, so that's a $10,000 there. So again, we received that money earlier this year, we just want to be able to spend that to offset the costs of the truck. I think that's it.
I'll open the floor up for any questions, concerns, comments. Other than the public safety, or low, uh, low it of 400,000, all of the money that needs to be re-appropriated was donated to the city of Beech Grove. No tax dollars. So this requires a approval on three readings. So this evening, I'll ask the clerk to read General Ordinance Number 7, 2020 into the record for the first reading. And I will take a motion to read by title only.
We have to read the first one in the record, right? It has to be read once into the record.
Once into the record. Jim?
Jim, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Uh, please. Under personal services, you said that would be tapped, the 26,000 plus would be tapped for some overtime? Is that what you stated?
The 26 from the CARES Act.
Okay, okay. And then under the personal services for both police and fire, the 226 and 200,000 respectively, was there any? Well, how, can you break those down a little bit?
Yeah.
Where's the mud on that, please?
So if you look, this is the current appropriation report. If you see appropriation, it must have been, has 200 from salaries personnel, and then 100 from overtime, 100 from overtime. That's where, that's where it's coming from. So it's budgeted out of the public safety, we just got to move it over to the appropriation so we can
Thank you.
Pay instead, pay. Sorry, I figured this here earlier. As you look at last year, Resolution Number 9, 2019, you get, the previous city council did an additional appropriation from the public safety local income tax for $225,000. So that was approved by the city council last year. Good, Gary? Can you go and read it?
Six L.
Additional Appropriation Ordinance Number 7, 2020. Whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. And whereas the city of Beech Grove, Indiana, is a duly formed municipal corporation within the state of Indiana, governed by its duly elected mayor and council. And whereas the council has a duty and authority to maintain and allocate funds as necessary from the duly adopted budget to maintain the fiscal integrity of the city and maximize efficiency. And whereas it becomes necessary to appropriate more funds for the fiscal integrity of the city. Now therefore be it affirmed that the Beech Grove Common Council desires to appropriate the funds listed below based on the recommendation of the clerk treasurer. Section 1, whereas a public hearing was held on September 8th, 2020 after having been properly advertised, now therefore be it ordained by the city of Beech Grove Common Council, the city of Beech Grove, Marion County, that the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Fund name, 101 General, major budget classification. Personal services, fire, amount $226,614. Amount approved by fiscal body, $226,614. Personal services, police, $200,000. Amount approved by fiscal body, $200,000. Other services and charges, border works, $52,500. Amount requested, amount approved by fiscal body, $52,500. Capital outlays, border works, $410,000 requested. Amount approved by fiscal body, $410,000. Total for 101 General Fund, amount requested, $889,114. Amount approved by fiscal body, $889, $889,114. Fund name, 264 CARES Act Provider Relief. Amount requested, personal services, $26,614. Amount approved by fiscal body, $26,614. Total for 264 CARES Provider Relief Fund, amount requested, $26,614. Amount approved, $26,614. Fund name, 115 Mayor's Donation, Mayor, major budget classification. Other services and charges, amount requested, $3,800. Amount approved by fiscal body, $3,800. Total for 115 Mayor's Donation Fund, $3,800 requested, and amount approved by fiscal body, $3,800. Now be it affirmed that the common council approves the additional appropriations requested above. Now be it further affirmed that this ordinance only applies to the funds listed above and no other budget matter. Now be it further affirmed that this ordinance shall go into effect immediately upon passage by the common council, attested by clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thanks, Jim.
Any questions or comments? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve General Ordinance Number 7, 2020 on first reading only.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear this on second and third reading at the October fifth, October fifth council meeting. That concludes new business. And before we get into council comments, I want to give you some dates so that upcoming that we're going to be doing some budget work and other work. A week from tonight, at seven PM in these chambers, there's a public hearing on the application for the OKRA grant to do sewer rehab. So that will be held in these chambers at seven PM on September the twenty-first at seven PM in these chambers, there'll be a council workshop for the two thousand twenty-one budget. There will be no vote taken. And this is to inform you and take it, take you through the proposed budget for next year. On October the fifth, Monday, we will have the first reading of the salary ordinance and the budget ordinance for two thousand twenty-one. So that is the timeline. And then on October nineteenth, will be the second and third reading of the two thousand twenty-one salary ordinance and budget. So it'll pick up a little bit. Kind of like to stay away from ordinances and other items when the budget is going on, so you can focus on the budget. So those are the dates I wanted to pass on, and I'll turn it over to council comments. Dave, I'm sorry.
I've got some questions real quick, Mayor, before we get there. One, a citizen approached us tonight about having a stop sign put at Second and Alton. Does that have to be done through a resolution?
No, ordinance, takes three readings.
Three readings for that?
Yeah.
Okay. So I definitely want to make sure we get that put on the docket for whenever the earliest we can to get that taken care of.
That might show up, that might show up at the October nineteenth meeting.
Okay.
Because Kevin has the same concerns down on Grove Wood.
Okay. Uh, second thing I have, or comment I have is, two months ago, when the IDIM report was sent, given to us, we were advised that the city has to, certain timeframe to work on a plan to address those issues. We were informed that we were going to be told what that plan was. We have yet to receive anything, and it's been two months. Has there been a plan established?
Yes and no. There has been a draft plan, and it's went to IDIM for approval. Once IDIM approves it, then it'll be for public record.
Okay. So IDIM is the group that has to approve that?
Yes.
Okay. We don't have a say in the report?
No.
Also, a question I have is, I've been hearing some rumors that, from my understanding, the police department entered into a contract last year for several years with the city, and part of that contract was that they were in good faith that they were going to receive raises this year. And I'm being told that those raises are not being included in the proposed budget.
And the contract for police and fire says three percent raise if the city does not negotiate in good faith. And I've had two meetings with both the police and the fire. And I have given them everything that has been produced to me through our financial consultant.
So, so you're explaining that there's no money in the budget next year for the raise?
I'm not saying that we're done yet, but this legislative body has to take into account what COVID will do to us this year and especially in twenty-two. Same way with city of Indianapolis and IMPD. No raise this year, or no raise twenty-one and twenty-two.
So I have no idea. Or is that what you're saying for police and fire?
That's what I'm hearing, for IMPD and IFD.
Okay. From my understanding, their contract negotiations are still classified, and they can't share any information from their committee, and they haven't even started negotiations yet.
I could just say that
It, it just, Mayor, my point is, it just bothers me that before the budget is proposed to the council, you're already telling the employees, we're not even going to offer you a raise or even try to present a raise to the council. It's not happening. We're not going to present it to the council.
That door hasn't been closed yet, but we have to, we have to be careful in twenty-one. And because we have shortfalls, especially in MBH and LRS, and twenty-two is going to be worse than twenty-one, so we really have to be careful with raises and hiring people. So would, we like to give raises? Yes. Given a raise every year that, since two thousand and thirteen, yes. Can we? I don't know yet. We'll find out here in the next month or so.
Okay. That's the only question.
But there's other things, Bobby, there's other things in the agreement that we can do pursuant to the contract for, in the salary ordinance, and it'll get pointed out. Anything else?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Dave, council comments?
Thank everyone for coming. It was an interesting meeting, to say the least. But I appreciate everyone coming. That's all I got.
I just want to thank everybody for coming. I really hope we can do something for our police and fire. I'm all for that. That's all I got.
Thanks, everyone, for coming, and thank you, Taster Dickinson, for a beautiful invitation. Wonderful. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everyone for their time, but I need to do some house cleaning. The other day at the RDC meeting, I made a statement that I had lunch with Tom Hannah, and it was a very casual hot dog. It was no set schedule or anything like that, so I don't want any ill effects, you know, in Tom's way, based on that. Looks like September the twelfth, behind here at City Hall, we're having goose shredding that's open to the public, obviously. And then one of the community churches this morning made a comment for families of need, October tenth at ten AM, Southwood Baptist Church, will be distributing weather, like winter jackets for children and adults. If there's a need within the community, they're free. Again, October tenth at ten AM at Southwood Baptist. Thanks for your time again. Thank you.
I just want to thank everybody for coming. I don't really have anything that you guys haven't already shared, so enjoy the rest of it.
You know, the Department of Public Works and that employee.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming and sharing their concerns with the council. Just let you know that you did not go unheard. We are looking into those. And also, I'd also like to thank the community. My family here, a couple weeks ago, came down, but we all had to quarantine, and we had a great outreach from the community, including the mayor, calling and checking on us to make sure we didn't need anything and that we were okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
No other comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you. See you on September twenty-first at seven.